Alrighty. Welcome to the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, Tom Lake Luzern zoning board of appeals meeting. Please rise and recite the public defense.
I believe that is built by the United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, and in the world.
Two items before we get into the agenda, I would like to thank everyone for completing their mandatory twenty twenty-two training before the end of twenty twenty-two. So we can all continue to participate as board members. And I sent out the email today. The town is currently without counsel. Town is working on getting counsel. Contacted by Jim Niles as representative to the town board, and he explained the situation to me. He asked what we were doing this evening. I said, basically, we have one variance application which we're just reviewing for completeness. And I felt that we could do that without counsel present. Anyone has an objection to that, please let me know. Alright then, on the agenda this evening, we have a new application area variance two zero two-two dash A V seven. For Michael LaPage, parcel number three point one, three one eight point one dash one dash one six seven Ralph Road. First front yard setback request. Approval of the minutes and zoning board meetings for September and October and new and old business. We can do the roll call after the agenda.
Yes, sir.
But please Karen, hold the roll.
Well, I'm gonna let Chris.
Well, I was gonna ask that question, okay? Please, I'll talk, so you're chopping it a bit, that's what it is. Chris, could you, could you please call the roll?
Matt.
Present.
James.
Present.
Bertis.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Michael.
Present.
Okay. Area variance two zero two-two dash A V dash seven, Mr. LaPage, would you come to the table? Or is Monica speaking, or both?
You can pull up another chair there.
Yeah.
No.
Well, they just want to make sure that you speak into the mic because it's recorded.
So tell me about your area variance request.
We're looking for approval because of. It had to be set a little bit closer to the road, our foundation, only because it's a big rock, it's very rocky there in the mountain. They tried doing a jackhammer to try to move it or break it up any, and they moved it. We didn't realize it until we had the foundation survey done again. And she said it was a little bit off, so we're looking for approval. It's sixty-seven point four, it should be seventy-five minimum. I mean, it's hardly noticeable. It doesn't change, you know, the neighborhood, the look or anything. So we're just looking for approval.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to look at the package? Does anyone have any questions for either the applicants?
I just wanted to mention that they had provided, when they applied for the permit for the house, that's what this before survey is. The after one is after the house was set and they had it resurveyed, and then I. Added after I spoke with Mr. LaPage. They have to put a landing, the front entrance, they have a front entrance door, and they have a side entrance door. And they have to put a landing on that front entrance door, but they only plan to put a four by four, I believe you said.
There's a temporary one there right now.
Yeah. And stairs that go down, not out more towards the road, but right down along the side of the house, which I provided you a picture of. I took that this morning. But I included that even though it's open to the sky, just so that you'd know that there's four more feet. Basically of being taken away from that seventy-five foot.
But the code says without a roof on it.
Without a roof, we don't have to worry about it, but I, I, I just wanted it physically on the plan so that there was no question about that landing being there.
When you erase, when I do the original deck, it's gonna be the same way. Just the ground's frozen, it's kind of hard to dig down.
Yeah, because that will never pass. So now you said you were unaware, I mean, obviously you just saw the rock or you're excavator.
Yeah.
So you were unaware that they shifted the house into after the survey or?
Until after the foundation was poured and they, the bank managed to resurvey it after the foundation was done. And then that's when we found out it was moved as much as it was.
Oh, so they, so your survey, I've assumed told you they had to move it a little bit, or you just?
Not, the contractor did the footings and poured the foundation and. Like I said, our bank made us resurvey it after the foundation was done.
Yeah.
And that's when we found out that we were over the. The footage there a little bit, four feet or seventy, whatever it was there.
I missed this. This house is already built.
It's modular.
And the foundation's already there.
What happened was they, yes, they put the foundation in, they poured it, the house was scheduled to come. They had it surveyed, they found that the foundation had been moved forward. And it was like the house is coming, I, you know, so I told them they more or less had to go ahead and let them place the house because. When it's coming, it's coming. There's not much you can do about it because you've got, they schedule all the. Lifts and everything to put the house on and you're kind of on their timeline at that point.
Yeah, and it's been nothing but a nightmare from day one. Our first contractor, we had a fire because he literally did nothing. In eight months that we had, and the house was here. But we had to hire another contractor to come in and get stuff done so we can set the house. Which we were trying to do before, it didn't work.
I have other pictures of the foundation. In accordance to the road, needed to see these. Sure. These were taken for the house.
Did your contractor document any of the, of the ledge that was there, or you just?
Photos on my phone of them actually jackhammering it, trying to get the rock to move. Yeah, I actually have. Another set, same pictures.
Also, so it's a full foundation. It's a full foundation?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a crawl space?
No. I'll go that way and we'll be back.
Everyone all set?
Read down through the application?
We are. No further questions, we'll go to the application. On page one, this is seeker exempt, has no county impact, and APA review is not required.
They're not in the Adronic Park is why it's not required.
First page of the application, seven Ralph Road. County Max map ID number one three one eight point one dash one dash one six R T. Michael LaPage. The applicant owner of the same, looking for relief from Article five. Cable A seventy-five foot front yard setback requirement proposing. Is that sixty-seven point four, seventy, seventy-one point?
I did sixty-seven point four because of that four by four landing.
But if he doesn't put a roof on it, then it doesn't count.
It doesn't count.
So, Mr. LaPage, are you looking, you have ever have any intention of placing a roof on that front porch? Then it shows to be seventy-one.
Okay, we can change that.
If you have an objection, might change into sixty-seven point four to seventy-one point four.
That's mine. The other thing that needs to be changed, Matt, is up here. Where they've got no mark, that should be marked, yes.
Oh, you're right. You are within five hundred feet of a county or state highway.
That's what triggered the referral.
Not.
So under that, under property address where there's that yes or no is the property within five hundred feet, change that to yes.
Okay.
Moving to the second page. History of the property. Property is one point seven seven acres of land that was purchased to make a primary home. Lot was clear, but there were obstacles due to the amount of rocks and land. Description of proposed action, modulars be placed on the foundation, bills to measurements on the plot plan. There is a lock. Ledge rock on the upper three sides, contractor tried with an excavator and a jackhammer, but would not break it. The house now. I read through this earlier, I. Are there words missing here? Because the end of the proposed action is in, if the house, and if I go to the attachment, it continues with the foundation has been placed.
Oh, okay.
So. Should the, in the house be struck, or is there something missing there?
She wrote it.
But it wouldn't break. Foundation.
I would just cross those three words off.
If we strike those last three words, then it makes perfect sense.
Okay, how that could be.
Foundation has been placed at forty-four point nine feet from the front left corner to the front property line, seventy-one point four feet to the center line of Ralph Road. And with a proposed four-foot landing, the measurements of the center line of Ralph Road will be sixty-seven point four feet, but as previously stated, the. Variance is requested at seventy-one point four feet rather than seventy-five feet. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Requested variance is to ask for the exception of the location of the foundation that was placed a minimal distance closer to the road. And a short distance away from our neighbor on the right due to ledge rock prohibiting the placement of the foundation on the original plot plan. I propose to do things a little differently this evening. I want to go through all of these answers and then go back through and ask if everyone is satisfied. Unless someone has an objection.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. A contractor rented a jackhammer attachment to the excavator. This was an extra fee of over three thousand dollars to us. Many hours spent trying to break up the rock, and an attempt was made to dig around it to try and loosen it all. The rock broke very little, but not enough to make for a level four, therefore the wall of the foundation had to be moved to the other side of it. Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is, the current foundation is sufficient, has been approved by the Warren County Building and Code Inspector as well as the inspector from our lender. At Homestead Funding, so no one has even noticed anything wrong because it is so minor. Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Requested variances for a minimal change is not noticeable to our neighbor on the left or to the neighborhood, neighbor across the street. Question number five, describe whether the question variance is not a self-created difficulty. Response is rocky condition of the property under the proposed foundation couldn't be foreseen until the digging had begun. And in addition to that. We have the Warren County Department of Project Review and Referral Forum. We have plot plan of the. Proposed location of the home. The current location, the home. And the one provided was by Karen, which shows the current location of the home with the four-foot addition to the front for the landing for the steps. Copy of the warranty deed. And that is the package. So going back to the application. And again, we are reviewing this application for completeness. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. I believe the question has been answered. Okay, me?
Yes, questions answered.
Rogers. Agreed.
Rail.
Question answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. The application describes the actions that were taken to try to remove the obstacle. I believe the question is answered.
Yeah, cool. To one, could I have comments on this now? Request anything, was I just, I'm disagreeing to what they have? What do we do that?
I would prefer to do that at the.
Is it something you want them to bring to the next meeting?
Okay, so I understand your excavator attempted to back everything else. Do you have a receipt from, I mean. See stating that you paid an additional three thousand dollars, or I'm, I'm just looking either at or an affidavit from your excavator, or if you'd want to come in.
We will have a.
Yes, so just know that he tried to do it and didn't just go, you know, oops, and just push it out in that spot.
Give him a check.
I mean, does anybody else on the board feel that that's necessary just for some backed up proof that that, you know?
I, I, I think that.
So where, where is the?
Turn me off, I don't see much of it.
Hey, it's me. Mike three.
Mike four?
You fixed it.
About to be cut, heard this off. So I was just thinking, unless anybody else on the board doesn't think that's something important, I would just like to request either some kind of an affidavit from their excavator or some kind of a proof that. Not saying that you didn't pay it, but just something in line that's saying that you took, these actions were taken, and it just wasn't just a oops, and we put it in the wrong spot.
No, I agree with that. It would also be helpful. To have some explanation as to how big that rock is, how far it goes back, and why the, why the foundation couldn't have been moved further back. In the road rather than closer to the road.
Was it a local excavator or someone from?
Syracuse.
Syracuse, okay. So do you think that's something you'd be able to provide for us?
I'll ask him.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so.
Question is answered.
Rogers.
Agreed.
Rail.
Question answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Question number three, explain whether this, this request, requested variance is substantial. What's the responses? The response is the current foundation placement is sufficient, has been approved by the Warren County Building and Code Inspector as well as the inspector from our lender. At Homestead Funding, no one has not even noticed anything wrong because it is so minor. I'm not really sure that answers the question. Jamie?
Well, the only word that the kind of answers is the minor at the end. But I think you just need to elaborate on that a little bit, because I, yeah, um, this is this basically stating in. In fee or percentages, there's nothing there showing that. How minor or not minor it is.
Right.
So that's something you want to elaborate on that would be very helpful. Or you could just, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot right now, but you could even elaborate on that and just bring it in if this gets approved, would that be sufficient?
If anyone comes in and wants to review the file, it should be complete, completed now, even if we add a statement or more than one statement to it.
Okay. Is there a change to that response that you would like to make here?
Yes. Up on about this, I just know that.
We can't, we can't, we can't give you the words.
Oh, no, no, I know.
Usually people take like. What you're asking, like you're asking for five. Four feet.
Right.
Variance, and you compare that to the overall seventy-five feet. That's usually what happens, and that's, you know, whether, whether you feel it's substantial or not, or if it's minor or.
Right.
But I mean, you've, you've said, no one has noticed anything's wrong because it's so minor, but if you put it in. Words that, you know, feet-wise. But you should try to do that now so that the application can be considered, they can vote, when they vote, they'll consider it complete.
I don't believe it's a very substantial amount because it is only the four feet. It's not really something that's. If it could have been changed any other, any other way, you know.
Her first sentence, would that be entered into the record she has to go?
If she repeated, we can enter it in.
First sentence you just said.
I concur.
Okay, it was. The distance to the road. Being that was four feet. Not much of a change. I don't know exactly my words, I'm sorry.
In your words, the requested variance is only four feet, is that why, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Which. I mean, looking at it from the road, it's, it's a four feet difference, it's very, it's a small amount. You know, it's not something that was foreseen.
And it's only on one corner, correct?
It's only one.
Okay, so I added on mine, the distance of the road is only. The distance of the road, is that right?
It's just really. From the road.
From the road is only.
Four feet among.
Four feet change and is a small amount.
Yeah, that's the upper right-hand corner.
Question answered.
Or just question answered.
Rail.
Question answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. Requested advances for a minimal change is not noticeable to our neighbor on the left or the, or the neighbor across the road. I believe the question is answered, Jamie. Rogers.
Question answered.
Rail.
Question answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested advance is not a self-created difficulty. Rocky condition of the property under the proposed foundation couldn't be foreseen until the digging had begun. As we know, these are always, almost always self-created. The question is answered.
Questions answered, questions answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
If I could, I did find the video and the pictures of trying to jackhammer that rock, try to take other rocks, slam it down on it. Still wasn't enough. I don't know if you want to see that or not. If it approaches.
We don't need to see it tonight, but that would be helpful. Assuming we approve this application instead of public hearing for that, that's where that would be very helpful to have.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions on this variance application. I'm all set. No further questions.
Make a motion to accept. The variance package. Two zero two-two A V dash seven, Michael LaPage, parcel number three point one eight. Three one eight point one dash one dash one six. As amended.
I'll second that.
Yes, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to set a public hearing for. Area variance two zero two-two A V dash seven for February ninth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh five.
Oh, second motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Bertie.
Yes.
Rail.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
That's it.
So what happens now is I have to send a notice to the paper. That we're having a public hearing on it. I have to send letters to property owners within five hundred feet of your property, and then anyone can come in and look at the file and. Give comment or come to the meeting and make comment, and so the next meeting will be on the, on the night here again at seven.
Okay.
Is there any way we'd be able to stream her video on that, something larger that we go see it? Instead of handing, passing her phone around or something, and everybody could see it, something to think about?
If you're able to transfer it onto a zip drive, I can put it on here. I don't know if there's another way that you could.
Email it.
Yeah, very good, Ray. Email it to us, if you want to, to our office.
Yeah, what emails have?
Lake Luzern. Four.
Yep. Number four.
Yeah, the number four at Albany. Dot T. T as in time, W as in Warner, C as in cable, B as in business, C as in class dot com.
Do you want me to do that now or by next?
You could just send it to the office by, I won't be in there until Tuesday now, so.
Thank you.
Well, British weather, I wouldn't win tomorrow either.
Okay, very good.
Okay, next time on the, on the agenda is approval.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from zoning board meetings for September and October twenty twenty-two. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? If not, if you do it now. I, I reviewed the minutes, I'm, I'm settled, right?
Anyone have any changes to the minutes?
I'm all set. I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed. I'm all set. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
You gotta do separately because I wasn't here for a while.
Um, we found out at the last meeting that you can vote on him whether you were here or not.
Is it, is your motion to accept both sides, Jamie?
My motion is to accept both sides.
Second.
There's a quick question. I'm not gonna keep you there all night. It's on this thing right here. What? This one right here.
Which one is that? Which is that?
What is, um, number two, current locations and housing density in HR district? In rezoning some areas currently zoned RT to HR based on housing density.
That's out of your report, Matt.
Right.
I just don't, I don't remember the whole of that stuff.
We talked about, uh.
Rezoning some areas currently zoned RT.
Yes.
That was pleasant, pleasant view, uh, pleasant view drive. We discussed rezoning that. Looking to East River Drive that though were discussed at the meeting. Um, I can tell you specifically because, uh, Annie was, was concerned that, that her, it was not being considered. As, as part of that because she was not on Pleasant View. She was on the next street over, but that was discussed.
Okay.
The, the number two one was where we were talking about where the current locations of the short-term rentals were located and that they seem to be. In that Lake Venar area in the HR area quite a bit. That's, that's what the number two one was. And then the, um. Rezoning of the RT to HR were those areas on Pleasant View and on East. River Drive that are currently, they're very small half, less than half acre parcels that are zoned RT, which should be an acre. And they more fit the definition of. Um, Hamlet Residential and we were discussing that. When we were talking about whether or not to regulate where the short-term rentals go by zone. That's when that came up in discussion.
Okay, so I thought like Andy or somebody had a whole. List of little things that we were working on, like changing the height.
Yeah, that's the, that's for the zoning ordinance itself that we've got different things that we want to look at and change. But this was, this report was just about the short-term rentals and whether or not. The board felt that we should regulate them in certain areas of.
So this whole thing is just. This is strictly covering.
That short-term rental discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
If I, I just, I didn't want to get off by saying that, you know, we want zoning changes or we want to change zoning districts or.
No, we haven't even come to that yet.
Okay. That's fine. And that was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie.
Jamie.
Yes.
No, I made it in a generated.
Seconded.
Oh, yeah, it is.
That's okay.
You can.
Sure. Yes.
Yes, Jamie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Under the category of new and old business, um. Old business. I happened to, uh. Be driving down Potash Road yesterday.
Can't wait for my house.
I don't know which one it is, so you're, you're, you're fine. And I happened to see Kevin Hannah's, uh, truck in the driveway. And I saw his, one of his workers, uh. Nate, because he's done a lot of work on my house, uh, in the driveway and I stopped in and Mr. Sharlin. Has hired quality builders to fin, complete construction of the building, so. Um, our concern about that not being completed by April, that should go away. Um, there is a workshop. On short-term rentals on the sixteenth here in the town hall at seven PM, if anyone is interested. There's also a, uh, workshop on the comprehensive plan on February seventh, uh, was contacted by, uh. Uh, Councilman Niles and requested to, uh, invite all the members of the zoning board appeals to that comprehensive plan meeting, so. Consider this your official invitation.
I think they're getting close to make their presentation about. The completed comprehensive plan, correct, Chris?
That might be the presentation.
Okay.
Then they have a schedule on their, on their email.
Okay.
And at next month's board meeting, since we are going to be having one, since we just approved a public hearing. And even if we hadn't approved a public hearing, I wanted to have one anyway, because I would like to. Take some action, um, what rail had referred to previously, the list of things that we never have take, we, we have not taken action on amendments to. To provide, be able to come up with a list of amendments that we want to provide to the town boards, so we can get them to act on amending our zoning regulations. So the ones that come to mind was specifically is the height restriction for. Yes. Uh, that, that is, that is one. I know Annie has a list, so I will endeavor to get that list and get that list to you. Uh, a couple of weeks before the next board meeting, so you have a chance to look at it and anything else that you know of, um. That you think we need. To be worked on. There are a lot of things. Um, the, the zoning map itself is, is a, a major project that needs to be worked on, but. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to start off with the smaller, uh, more readily achievable pieces like the definitions and the standards that we're applying. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else, Jamie.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
There just.
Thank you.
Rail.
Thank you.
All right, you're good. Thank you.
The only thing that I have is, um. Anyone that is thinking about taking that training in Saratoga on February and I think it's February first. You need to send in. Your application to them yourself. You will receive back an email with like a confirmation in it. I need a copy of that, which you can just email to me. And then I can include that with the voucher that I have to send to them ahead of time. So that they get paid for it. So if you are going to be doing that. Um, please get that to me. I would like it by the twenty-fourth, if possible, to give me a little bit of leeway. To get it to them in time.
Ask how many people are planning on attending just out of curiosity.
I'm gonna go to.
Well, I'm, I'll be there.
Chris Kasey is gonna.
It's hard if you're working full time.
Good. Seems like.
Chris is gonna go.
Seems like every December, oh, okay, we do a bunch of training. I send it in. That's for the last year or something, next year.
This one that you, if you take this one in February, that will cover you for this year.
So stuff I just turned in last week was for last.
Last year, yeah.
Okay. I'm a week year behind, maybe you're ahead.
Correct.
Well, it came up that it was available and I, that's why we got it out to you because the sooner you get it taken care of, the better off.
You know, they were pretty good. I've been down there before and that's, it's so much nicer in person.
Yeah, it's, I've, I've been there. I've been there once and it is, it's, it's very well done. But if you have to work. Kind of takes care of that. Chris, do you have anything?
Hunter. On today. I was looking for the, uh. Schedule I have somewhere there's an email with the master plan schedule and find it out the meeting date.
I looked on the, I looked on the town website and I, I, I can't even find, I couldn't even find a date for the meeting.
For this meeting?
For the comprehensive plan.
Oh, for the comprehensive plan. I didn't look for it, so I would have to go on and look.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Oppose?
Nay.
Thank you, gentlemen.